So, welcome to the Conservation Commission.
Welcome to the board.
This may be unprecedented, I'm not sure. So, what brings you to see us here tonight?
So, yeah, basically, we're here to, first of course, listen to each other. We had a, in our most recent meeting, while we didn't have a vote, we did give guidance, four to one, to town council that it was, we agree with his advice that be a co-host with SVT and the Conservation Commission. That was our suggestion, listening to his advice. And we wanted to come and see what the commissions thought were on doing, adding. Mr. Shea is going to speak on the board's behalf.
Again, thank you all for being here. So, we met, so at our last board meeting, we met with the Conservation Restriction Commission, and Ben is the, this commission's representative on that. And again, as Dan had said, the discussion really focused on the holder of the conservation restriction. And the recommendation from the committee was that Sudbury Valley trustees hold it solely. During the course of the discussion at our meeting, the town council gave an opinion as to why he thought that ought to be co-hold. So, we, again, did not vote, but by, as the town council was looking for guidance as to how to move forward, it was our four to one straw poll opinion that it ought to be co-hold. And following that, I think our board realized that if we are going to ask the Conservation Commission to be a co-owner on the conservation restriction on something as important as this, it's not fair just to put it all on Ben at that last meeting. So, we wanted to have a joint meeting with the full commission here tonight to get, listen to your opinions on that, see what thoughts you may have on co-holding the conservation restriction. So, we are here tonight for that. So, we'd like to hear your opinion. I'm sure other small board would be willing to share thoughts on your opinions as well.
Okay. All right. Ben is a representative to the, you know, the, of course, committee. Do you want to provide the commissioner with a report?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So, I think all the commissioners got a copy of our final report that we presented to this selectman. And just like at that last selectman's meeting, I think this describes, you know, our series of six meetings. In fact, much of those meetings was devoted to the issue of the ultimate holder of the conservation restriction. And ultimately, we voted unanimously to recommend that Sudbury Valley trustees be the sole holder of the conservation restriction. So, we did that with some reluctance because town council, of course, had recommended this, this co-holding arrangement where, where conservation would be a, what he called a principal co-owner. And then SVT would be there to prevent a, prevent a problem that he called the doctrine of merger, where the owner of a property can't at the same time hold a conservation restriction, so naming SVT is required to avoid that legal conundrum. So anyhow, we spent a lot of time discussing this issue and the reasons why we ultimately came down in favor of a single holder. There's a list of those reasons in our report, and I'll just go through them very quickly. I think at a previous meeting of ours, we did, we did speak about this somewhat. First, we were impressed with SVT. They've been around for 70 years. Just in Southborough alone, they hold six conservation restrictions on properties totaling 220-some-odd acres. And SVT owns outright six properties in Southborough totaling another 34 acres. They hold 22 CRs in surrounding communities totaling 2,500 acres. So, they're, they're an exceptionally well-qualified organization with a professional staff and a very long history of excellence in this, in this field. Some of the issues that we saw having conservation being a co-owner was, you know, we know that 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 has a very full plate. And when we talk about conservation being a co-owner, really what we mean is, you know, that would be doing, would be doing the work. And there was some concern that, you know, that we simply don't have the capacity to take on this extra work. But there was also, there was discussion and suggestion by Attorney Soprano that if needed, funding may be available to offset that. Any land trust, and of course, one of the co-holders has to be a land trust for a CR. Any land trust is going to require an endowment to, to cover their work to protect the CR in perpetuity. And SVT was kind enough to provide us with an estimate based on the draft CR we had put together. They looked at that and came up with an estimate of what that would cost. And I was, I was dumbfounded when the number came in at, see here, $37,598. Frankly, I thought that was, that was an absolute bargain. To, to do a number of things. First, to, to put together the baseline documentation on the parcel that will, that will be used, you know, from this point going forward to determine if any changes have been made to the property. Doing the annual inspections, reviewing proposed, some proposed work on the property in accordance with the CR documents, you know, on an, perhaps, an annual basis. And then enforcing the CR if necessary by going to court if it has to happen. All of those things covered with the $37,598. And that's likely, the, the number is likely to be roughly the same for any, any land trust that, that would be involved. It looks like, I think, where everyone is looking at SVT as at least a co-owner here. This was a concern of mine. I think it's, it's easy to envision scenarios where conservation is called on to, you know, first enforce the Wetlands Protection Act or local wetlands, wetlands bylaw, and if we are the principal co-owner here, to enforce the CR on, for instance, the golf course management company. Or perhaps if there's something happened at the public safety facility that, that caused an impact to the golf course parcel, that would, you know. I was assured by both town council and our special counsel, Lou Flegier, an environmental attorney, that there's no, no legal conflict. But it, it feels to me that there's sort of a practical one. We're, we, we would be asked to enforce the CR, but at the same time, you know, as we are in Southborough, we, we want the golf course to succeed, and I think it would put us, or just as importantly, future commissioners, in a difficult situation. We felt that a single grantee provides just a, a much cleaner administrative arrangement. You then don't have to get into what happens if the two co-holders don't agree. You know, what is the, the process that, for instance, the golf course management company would have to go through to get permission to do various activities in the site? That is, that, that's all swept away for a single holder of it. And in order to have co-holders, in addition to the CR, a memorandum of understanding has to be negotiated. And this is, this is a side document, not recorded at the registry of deeds, but a side document that, that defines the, how the responsibilities under the CR are shared. So, to, to gain the, the total understanding of how things work, you have to have both the CR and a memorandum of, of understanding, which adds another layer of complexity. All CRs in Massachusetts, they have to pass a review by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And we were concerned particularly with the, the idea of conservation being a principal co-owner and a land trust being, I guess, the, the term junior co-owner was used here. Apparently, that's not the right term to use, but somehow conservation would be the principal co-owner. There's a worry that, that Energy and Environmental Affairs would, would see that sort of as a, using the land trust as kind of a legal pig leaf to, to, so that, you know, that constructively, the CR would be almost owned by the town, the same, you know, the same entity that owns the land. And we, we were concerned that, that EEA just wouldn't approve it. You know, we'd go through all this work, send it to them, and they would send it back to the town to be reworked, and we would, we would clearly miss our deadline of July 1st, 2018, to get this thing recorded at the registry of deeds. One part of the charge we were given by this selectman was to hold a, a public forum and solicit public input. And we, we publicized this forum as widely as we could, and we had fantastic attendance. I, I recognize many faces that are, that are in the audience. I see some new ones here this evening. Every single person that, that spoke on the issue had the opinion that it should be a single holder. We, we had, there was nobody in the audience that, that was in favor of a co-holding arrangement. Okay. Let's see. So, on the issue of, of cost, now I mentioned the, the estimate of the endowment that SVT was kind enough to give us. You know, it's, it, it is to be expected that if there was a co-holding arrangement, that number, components of that number would decrease if conservation took on certain tasks. For instance, I don't know, annual inspection or something like that. But then, as you look at it more closely, a land trust especially like SVT is, and this would come up in, in negotiating with them for their, for their role in this, they wouldn't accept a position where they're, they just don't do anything. It's not the kind of organization they are. They would, they would have an active role in the, the management and enforcement of the CR. And, let's see here. Sorry, I'm tripping over my own tongue. I think that the, the idea of cost savings, I think, is, is illusory. I, I think ultimately, their number really wouldn't change that much because they, you know, they would, they would insist on, on maintaining some responsibilities in the property. And then also, conservation would be doing some of the work, which would, which would add to the price. And I think ultimately, the co-holding arrangement would be more expensive to the town and would add administrative complexity. And I think in exchange for this added cost and complexity, I don't think the, the committee saw what the town was getting in return for this cost and the complexity. It, it just, we didn't, we didn't see a return for that. I think in, both we and, and the members of the public who, who came and spoke illustrated our, our ideas using, you know, we were talking about something in perpetuity. So, we were thinking of hypothetical scenarios that could happen, you know, we have to protect against this, we're worried about that, and gave some, some, some concrete examples. And we never really heard a, a hypothetical scenario where having a co-holding arrangement would somehow save the day. We just never heard that articulated. And I think many of us, you know, we, we noticed that absence, and we, we felt like we just, for this added cost and complexity, we, we weren't really getting anything in And then lastly, excuse me. Let's see. Actually, excuse me. Yeah, that's, that was, that was the reasoning behind our unanimous vote to recommend that Sudbury Valley trustees be a sole holder of the conservation restriction.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, the last week or so, the Conservation Commission has received via emails, a number of letters from residents expressing their opinion on whether the CR should be solely hold, held by organizations such as SVT or co-held by the Conservation Commission. And I'm not going to read all these letters in the record, but I will let you know that we got a letter here from Kate Burke, who was recommending that the CR be solely held by SVT. We received a letter from Wayne and Carol Long, requests would drive south from Mass, expressing the same, the same position. Also received a letter from Ann Alfland, I don't know if I didn't mention the last name there.
Good job.
Thank you. Expressing, from 26 Lattice Corner Road, expressing, you know, her desire that the, the CR be held solely by SVT. Another letter received by Sally Waters, also expressing the, the CR be held solely by SVT. Another one by Deborah Costin-MacAdow, 6 Wood Street, also in the same, same position as SVT, solely holding the CR. Another one from Karen Defazio, again, recommending that it be solely held by SVT. And Thomas McCarthy, 13 Lattice Corner Road, also expressing his opinion that the CR should be solely held by SVT. And another one from Vincent Valvo and Deborah Cantor, 7 Lattice Corner Road, South Row, again, recommending that SVT be the sole holder of the SV, of the CR. And lastly, a letter from Holly Bonowski, 22 Lattice Corner Road, expressing the, the same position. So, I just want to make sure that record shows that we've received these letters from various residents among, around South Row, expressing their opinion and position on this matter. So, the board voted straw vote, four to one, to, for the CR to be co-held between, say, SVT or Land Trust Foundation and, and the Conservation Commission. Can I ask the reasoning why, given the letters and, you know, the results of the committee?
You know, I'll only, Brian will speak on behalf of the, of the board on this, but I'll only make a suggestion that we get, we get letters to. So, in fact, if, if those, if we made our decision in, in for the public safety facility, number one, as well as the Main Street project, number two, based on those in the room at the time, or those that, you know, are more, maybe more active, you know, in, in letters or coming to meetings, you know, we maybe wouldn't have either one of those. Because there was a lot of opposition in our meetings, in the rooms, and we did get some mail against both of those things. And then town meeting was overwhelming. So, you know, it's, it's good. I'm, I'm glad people do send in letters and come to meetings. That's how we get input too. But, you know, there's a lot of people who don't come to those meetings, a lot of people who are at home and don't send in letters and, but are very supportive of things that the board has done. We have, you know, as I said at the last meeting, you know, for me personally, if I ever, if I get advice from our town council that he thinks that a co-host is in the best interest of the town, would provide the town the most protection. And this is an incredibly beautiful piece of property that we now own across the street. And I want to see it held, I want to see it solely used for only a golf course and for passive recreation, and that's it. There won't be any buildings on there, the, the restriction will be there in perpetuity. And, you know, so it, it takes a, it would be a very high bar for me to go over to say, I know more than town council as to what is, you know, would provide this town the most protection. I didn't see it in the arguments either way. I mean, I, I am actually surprised at the amount of passion involved in, you know, this, it has to be solely held by this entity, SVT. We don't want our Conservation Commission involved in this. It's something this big, I'd love to see our Conservation Commission involved in this and, and absolutely, of course, co-held by SVT. So, you know, with that, I, that, you know, he swayed, you know, he swayed, his advice sways me, and, and I follow it unless I find that there's some really egregious, you know, miscarriage of justice, and he's contemplating, or his, his advice is so bad that I'm, I'm not going to follow it. That's a rare event. So, anyway, I, I wanted to offer that, and Mr. Shea, you may have more.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that the conservation restriction, as it's currently written, very strongly protects continued use as a golf course, and it very strongly limits the use of the site to passive outdoor recreation. And one of the unique aspects of this property, compared to other conservation restrictions at all, is that there is a golf course on it as well. So, that's not all, this isn't the only conservation restriction that would have a golf course, but there would. And it's in the town's best interest to see the golf course succeed and be very successful there. And you need to be, to be sure that when it's not used as a golf course, it's going to do to the outdoor passive recreation, as, as written on the, in the CR. And, you know, as, as Ben had, you know, mentioned, struggling to look at, you know, what-if scenarios, because, I mean, this is in perpetuity, this is forever. And, you know, from, as I read the conservation restriction and also took into consideration the fact that we are going to have a management company that also needs to, to run the golf course, there is the potential for some conflict to arise, for some difference to arise between SVT and the way that we, the town thinks that the course needs to be run and maintained to be a successful golf course. So, from that perspective, you know, rather than having to go the legal route, there's a discrepancy all the time, that if a town entity also was a co-owner, that might be a way to help mitigate any potential disagreement there. And in trying to determine which town entity would be best appropriate for that, town council did, you know, explain to us the governing language created by the legislature to create conservation, one of the purposes of which is to promote conservation and passive outdoor recreation. So, that, that was language that was incorporated into the legislature when Conservation Commission language was, was created, the town ultimately adopted it. So, it just seemed logical to me that if there was a town entity to be a co-owner to that, it would be the one charged with passive outdoor recreation, which is the Conservation Commission. That, it was an, an argument presented to me that, that was logical, it made sense. I could see where, you know, that could be, you know, that town entity that could come into play to help offset any potential disagreement that may arise between SVT and the way that a golf course might need to be run, realizing that this is in perpetuity.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes? I would also just like to add my thoughts on this as well. That I agree that it is also in the best interest of the town to see the golf course succeed. I was not in support of conservation, holding the restriction. It's not that conservation doesn't do a great job, because we know that you do. Some of the concerns that Ben mentioned, the staffing, was one of the issues that I had. Another concern I had was with a permitting authority, also an enforcement authority, being the holding authority on a piece of property. Town council disagreed, that, to me, it was the town policing the town, in a way. If there is an enforcement issue, for instance, and town council has to be the enforcement, and it may be the golf course, or it may be whomever, and say it is the public safety by chance, then you'll issue an enforcement, or the town council will review that. Now, if you need outside counsel, you have to come to the selectmen and ask for outside counsel, which, that was a concern for me. Also, the cost as Ben mentioned, thirty-seven thousand dollars over time. You can't depend on Beth to do all of this, that's just asking a lot. So, you're talking potentially additional staffing. And the benefits and the money over time, and a perpetual CR, that, you know, taking those costs in as well. My understanding is we currently use SVT to do the yearly monitoring in Chesnutville Farm. You know, is that correct, Beth? So, we currently use them now to do this. So, if we're looking at the same outcome as town meeting voted, and I think that all of us, all the selectmen sitting here today, we all want to see this preserved in perpetuity. Whether it's one holder or two holders, I think we still achieve the same effect. And, and then, for instance, is Newton has a golf course. They have a CR that, not a CR, it's, it's held by an outside entity. It was approved by EEOA in 2009. So, this isn't something new in asking to have one soleholder outside of the town. And again, it's, it's not a matter of not trusting the Conservation Commission. This is something going down the road. None of us know twenty years from now what's going to happen, or who's going to be sitting on these boards, or who's going to be sitting on the selectmen, for that matter. So, the town meeting, for me, it was very clear, involving to preserve it in perpetuity. And I think, for me, the, the way to do it is to have an outside council. So, that's just giving you another side of the position of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I did, I did a little digging into SVT, you know, on their website. It's public, you know, you can just go on there, you can, you know, look at the various holdings they have, and so on and so forth. And, you know, they, they have a variety of models in which they, you know, oversee lands. So, they have lands in which they are the soleholder of the CR. They have lands in which they co-hold with Conservation Commissions of towns. They have lands in which there are multiple towns involved along with them in, in, you know, overseeing lands. So, from, from their expertise and their standpoint, where they so-hold, co-hold with the Conservation Commission, or other entities in the town, and so forth, from SVT's perspective and the model they have, I think that, you know, they, they can participate and they work within all those, those models, from what I can tell, and what they have on their website. Now, they've been around since 1953. That's, that's a, you know, considerable amount of time. The CR is, is something that's in perpetuity, which is forever. I don't know if, you know, SVT is going to be around forever or not, personally. They have a very strong organization now, it appears, they have many, many members. They seem to be well-funded. And I do know that the Commonwealth of, Commonwealth of Massachusetts will be around for a long, long time. I don't think that's anything that's going to go away. And therefore, Conservation Commissions will also be around for a long, long time. Certainly, we won't be on it in perpetuity. There will certainly be somebody here doing this job. So, I just wanted to, to add that, that, yes, Carol?
When you're looking at, I haven't looked at this, but if you're looking at, when they co-hold with the Conservation Commission, is it, is it the town property that they're holding on, or is it a separate piece of property that they're holding Conservation Restriction?
I mean, I didn't go look at, you know, how it's registered, you know, how the deed is registered. You know, I didn't, I didn't look at that, but there are CRs that they are co-holding with Conservation Commissions, co-holding with multiple towns.
Yeah, I can see that on a private piece of property, you know, we're together, yes.
All right. From, from the Conservation's Commission's perspective, a lot of this information we're just receiving in. Right, so we haven't had a lot of opportunity to digest it and so forth. So, from the perspective of taking a vote tonight, I'm not prepared to do that. I don't think the Commission is prepared to do that, in terms of whether we're going to recommend that the CR be co-held or solely held, or anything of that nature at this point in time. The, the other thing that comes to mind is that if the Commission were to decide that, you know, co-holding the CR is, is the right thing for, for the property and for the town, and so forth, that, from my perspective, I do realize that it's going to be somewhat of a burden, and it will take some funding, you know, and maybe staffing for the Conservation Commission to be able to provide the right level of oversight that's required, you know, to, for that property, moving forward.
Yeah, that, that was brought up in our meetings as well, and Lisa brought it up tonight. Mrs. Fannin, who couldn't be here tonight, said the same thing. And I think that is a very important aspect of it, and we would want to make sure that we're both comfortable.
Certainly, certainly lately with the economy being pretty good, this board's been pretty busy. You know, there's been a lot of, a lot of applications and things. And, as you know, the amount of high and dry land in South Row is, is kind of evaporated. And, and, you know, the parcels are becoming more and more complicated to permit, but, which, which makes us a little bit busy, and Beth very busy. Any other comments from the, from the board members?
Just open it up.
Just, you brought up a point, it was also brought up at the selectmen's meeting, I think, by, by Bonnie. And it was the issue of SVT, that despite having been around for seventy years, they may not be around forever. And, you know, I meant to address it, and I skipped right over it. We were lucky enough to have, at several of our meetings, Krista Collins, who works at SVT. And she taught us an awful lot about CRs in general, and how SVT operates. In fact, SVT, you know, during the negotiations to accept the CR, they literally will not accept it unless there is a succession clause in there that, that describes exactly the process for succession, should they somehow not, somehow fail in the future. They, they insist on having a safety net acceptable to all parties in place within, within the CR.
Thank you.
I guess I just have one question regarding timing. I understood from the last meeting that there was some kind of critical timing issue to get things in place in order to comply with the town meeting vote. Could somebody just?
So, the town meeting vote did require that the CR be in place by July 1st this year. So, it's going to take six, eight-month process. So, we are looking to get this wrapped up as quickly as possible.
To get it submitted to EEOA, correct? All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
My question to the board is, if a golf course did not exist on that property, would any of your positions change from what they currently are now on this?
So, that, I'll start, I guess. I would, again, want to consult with the town council, to see if there would be a difference in his opinion. And if there was no difference in his opinion, I would still follow his advice.
Anything will change?
I might be more willing to, you know, to agree to SVT as the soleholder, soleholder, in that situation.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Carol?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. One of the things I was going to ask about was the, we know SVT could manage it. We're pretty certain that SVT can certainly do the job. So, my question was going to be, what was going to be the value add of having the Conservation Commission part of this? Where are we going to add value? And I think you ought to answer my question. And it sounded as though the intent to having the Conservation Commission involved is to kind of run interference with SVT. If SVT says no, you want the Conservation Commission to negotiate with SVT? Is that, is that correct? Am I, is that my assumption, what I heard?
Well, I guess it, what it introduces, in the event, and again, I would think that the potential for there being disagreement is probably very low. But, you know, in the event that that did happen, again, it, it just gives the town, you know, the town made a big investment in this, right? The people in this town made a big investment in it. And to, to see that, that our interests in wanting this to continue successfully as a golf course, you know, through some town agency, ice cream, does it benefit them?
All right, now you said that the possibility of disagreement is very low. So, I don't know what the problem with having SVT running it is now. I mean, if you think it's not going to be a problem, why drag the Conservation Commission into it? Or just, I mean, this arbitration clause, and all this other, you know, stuff that was going to have to happen, the letter of, what did you call it?
Memorandum of.
Memorandum of, you know, we're going to have to get into that. You know, if you think that the probability that something is, that you're going to be in disagreement is very low, why do we want to get involved with that? I mean, let's just keep it clean. I mean, I have an engineering background. Simple is good for me, you know, and SVT is simple, right? They start adding bells and whistles, you know, and now you get into trouble. This sounds to me like bells and whistles. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see the word. But that's my opinion.
Ross? I don't think I can add anything. All right. Let me see, I'll, I'll open it up to the, the public. So, what I, what I would like to hear is anything that's, that's new and enlightening. You know, we've got all the letters that we've read, and we understand, you know, conflict of interests and all those sorts of things. So, if you have anything that's, you know, new that you can bring to the table that you think, you know, both the Commission and the board, the selectmen, you know, need to hear, then, please do so. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, Isabel Murphy, Neil Drive. Can I just ask a question about process?
Sure.
What would be the reasoning for not voting this evening?
Well, I'm not prepared to vote this evening, personally. I, I want to collect some more information myself. To me, I think it's a very important vote. And, you know, you know, the Commission is going to vote whether the CR is solely held or co-held. And my understanding is that that vote's going to stick, right? So, I want to make sure that, you know, I've got my eyes dotted and a D's crossed. I also have an engineering background, so I am very detailed. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, hi, Kate Burke, 14 Berkeley Drive. So, what happens if the Commission votes that you don't want to be a co-owner? Then what happens?
Well, my understanding then is that SVT is approached, or they have already been approached, but we go to SVT and, you know, solicit them to be the soleholder of the CR. And, and like, we have a cost estimate of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars? I don't know where the ninety-eight dollars comes from, but it's kind of an interesting number.
Forever?
My understanding is that's a forever number.
That's a total, pretty good deal.
That's a forever number. Now, you know, that said, those kinds of things are never forever, you know, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, they, they could come back at some point and maybe need some extra funding, I don't know.
Just, and then just a follow-up comment to that, that we heard that the Board of Selectmen would be willing to fund additional monies to the Conservation Commission to be co-holders when SVT could, it sounds like, be excellent soleholders. And I would just make a request as a towns person that those monies that would be directed to your Commission instead be directed to moving the clubhouse and funding some of the golf course monies that need to be put on the table to actually turn St. Mark's back into a golf course after the big hole is dug to put up the public safety building.
Okay, thank you.
Freddie Gillespie, and I am the Chair of the Golf Course CR Committee. And I don't think I heard it here tonight, but you're aware that if you co-hold, the endowment price is not going away. It's not necessarily going down, and could even increase because of the added, the spreadsheet which we should have sent out, and I'll do that tomorrow.
Are you referring to the thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars?
That's still there, because whether, however you define their role, they're responsible, if you don't, if for some reason town meeting doesn't fund the Conservation Commission to do it, or it doesn't happen, they're still legally responsible to ensure it happens forever. There's a cost to that. And all of the co-holding discussions could increase the time allotment for their staff to deal with any, you know, just like the management plan. Now, they have to have meetings with the Conservation Commission. They have a very precise schedule of how they, you know, and I, we, they haven't run ones for co-holding. But I'm saying, don't think that by the town, co-holding is a cost thing. There's potentially, well, definitely a cost increase, because you're still going to have expenses, and they're going to still have an endowment. I'm not saying I know what it is, because I don't, I don't know if it will go up, but there's a, there's a potential. And even if you say you're going to do all the inspections, which we know you already don't do, so, what, is the town people going to raise your budget so that you can pay SVT to do it? I still don't think it's going to lower their endowment. And, second of all, the timing here, so critically important to have a co-owner, that's a whole nother negotiation contract, outside of the CR discussion, because then you're going to negotiate with the CR. They have a board they have to go to, who hasn't even voted on whether they'd be willing to co-hold. They said they're willing to be the holder of the CR. That question was asked, that would they be willing, just would they be willing, or would you do it?
So, that went in front of their board, and they took a vote?
They voted they would be willing, depending on the terms, to hold the CR. I don't think their next meeting is until mid-February. Depending on when your vote is, now you have a mid-February, now you're going to start negotiations on the co-holding. Then you'll have to start negotiations on the holding, because if that doesn't go well, I don't know how the CR itself negotiates, I don't know how all these negotiations happen. Maybe some of it simultaneous? Now, we're talking, we're in the end of March, April, before it even gets on the secretary's desk? There's a little concern with that. And I understand you're not ready to vote. I, you know, I think we all expected that you would be, because it's the third Conservation Commission discussion on the topic. And, I mean, when, when would that happen?
Not really. We have not had three conversations on this as a Commission. We have, we have not had one conversation on it, as, as a result of receiving your board's comments. Right, so this is the first meeting that we've had with your board's comments in front of us. And we've not discussed that as a Commission as yet. Yes, sir?
I'll just add, so, and Mr. Gillespie is right, so the amount is not going to go down. And I think the amount, if I'm right, is around thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay, so.
Thirty-seven, five sixty-eight.
And how much did we spend for the golf course?
Absolutely, twenty.
All right, so, so that's a huge number. And so, if council is advising us that co-holding provides the town the best protection for the twenty-plus million we sent over there, I think thirty-eight thousand dollars is not going to, is nothing to sway anyone's decision over. And then, secondly, it is true that it'll take some negotiation. They've already, SVT has already informed town council that they're willing to entertain the co-hold. As we've seen, they've done it a number of times. I'm also informed that it, it, it should I'm also informed that it, it, it should, it's not a, a, you know, an acrimonious kind of negotiation. It's, they've done it before, the, the expert, Mr. Legere and his firm, they've done it before, so they know what to do to make a, to make a co-hold happen. So it may, while council has said it may take a little extra time, it's not gonna take a massive amount of time and a, and a very difficult negotiation to make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask?
Yes, sir.
I have a second question.
Name and address?
Ed Pearson, 30 Blackassquama. I keep hearing when we talk about how much money we're spending for the property, how much are we spending for the property? Because I keep hearing this twenty-something million dollar number. How much was the property? This is what we're protecting, not the building and the fire station and the police station.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the number is.
Because I keep hearing twenty-three, twenty-whatever. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Walt Lapp, 144 Main Street. I'm, I'm a little confused in that if, if we don't do a CR by July, whatever the town meeting said we, we have to have, what happens to that mon, I mean, what becomes of the CR then? Is, do we have to go to town meeting again to get the money? Why, why is this July thing so important?
That was the language that was put in the warrant article.
Okay. So what does that mean?
So it means we need, we need to continue working diligently to get it to the secretary's desk.
And they say it's gonna take six months or something like that to get this to the state.
Correct. And.
Yeah, after it's submitted.
And a lot of this couldn't have, we couldn't get the ball rolling on this until certain things happened, we actually acquired the land and all that, so.
And, and my second part of the question.
So, so sir, so you asking, what happens if we miss July 1st?
Yeah.
You know, so, so what happens if the EEOE doesn't sign this off by July 1st, 2008? What happens? I don't know.
I don't know, I don't either. You're, you're putting a date that it's gotta be done by.
Well, town, town meeting did that.
Okay, excuse me, somebody did it. Not me.
So Warren did it.
So the second question is, if we don't have a CR on this property, can, can they start building the golf, the, the public safety building?
You know. The answer's yes?
What? Yes, no?
The answer's yes.
Yes, they can. Doesn't make any difference.
Not for the, not for the construction of the public safety building.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, some of the questions, I don't have the answer to maybe.
No, no, I just, I, just for my own benefit, I don't.
Yes, sir?
Tim, 148 Firstwood. The one thing that strikes me about this conversation is that there's a lot of conversation about the opinion of someone who's not in the room. And you probably would want to hear from town council directly, you know, what his opinion is about what the consequences are one way or the other. I think there's a party line effect that may be going on here.
So we have, we have heard from, town council was in front of us, and we do, we do have in possession, a letter, written letter from town council, so we have heard from them.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Vincent Gallow, 75 Blackassquama. So basically, it's like a form for hiring, possibly hiring you to manage this property along with SVT. And what comes to mind is a scenario where if you were a hiring body, or I, where I was a hiring body and I was trying to, and I was asking you in an interview whether I should hire you as the commission to manage this property, and I found out from you that it was gonna, that you're gonna ask for more money than some other entity, that you might have mixed feelings about being a co-owner if you really didn't have the experience to be a holder of CR. Excuse me? If you would add to the bureaucracy of my company, because now there's another entity that has to come into making decisions, and if you had a likely conflict of interest with other parts of my company, do you think I would want to hire you to, to do this? To be, in this case, a co-owner? So think about that kind of scenario. When, if you're not essentially adding added value, even in a low probability situation, why would we as a town invest in this when we have a perfectly expert, experienced organization that can handle all of that? Why would we go to this extreme to solve this problem? It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Karen DiFazio from 16 Ledch Hill Road. And I, I have to go back to the, the issue of the town council. I went to the Board of Selectmen's meeting where the town council made his recommendation. It seems like Mr. Colendez is making his decision based on what the town council said. And I have to say at that meeting, I did not hear any sort of sensible reason why there should be, why that, why SVT should not be a sole holder of the CR. There's just nothing sensible about what he said. I don't know all the workings of the town government or what the relationship is between town council and the Board of Selectmen, but this was one person making an opinion. And maybe you have a reason there when you met with him, why it's sensible for this to be, the CR should be co-held by you and SVT. I, I didn't get a sensible reason. And I have to say that one of the things that he did say regarding your point was that, that there would be no litigation, that this would not be a situation where there would be litigation between the Conservation Commission and the SVT if there was a co-owner, that it, it was sort of one of those points that he made that everyone would get along. Now, I have to say that that's an interesting comment from an attorney to say that there would be no litigation. Perhaps today there would be no litigation, but we're talking about something that we're trying to protect when we're all dead and buried. And we don't know who would be on the Conservation Commission, and we don't know who would be on the Board of Selectmen, and we don't know who would be on town council. So it, it doesn't, I, I have no, I have no sense of a, a reason that makes any kind of logic to me to have a, a co-owner of the CR.
All right, thank you. Cassie?
Meany Latrell, 19 North Almira. I raised this question to the Board of Selectmen, I wasn't given an answer. So I'd like to raise it again. Town council mentioned in his argument that the reason he thought the Conservation Commission should be a co-owner was because of the statute. Historically, Conservation Commissions held conservation land, so they would be best suited to be a co-owner. And my question was why would the Board of Selectmen not transfer the fee to the Conservation Commission, have the Conservation Commission own the property, and then have SVT as the holder of the, the CR? Which would be cleaner?
And that's a question you asked to?
I asked the Board of Selectmen.
Did you get a response to that?
I, I personally would like to have town council here to help respond to that.
Yeah.
He was at the Selectmen's meeting at that time?
It was, so if he's available, I ended up coming to a meeting if that's something that can be addressed, that would be a good question.
Okay. Anything else? Freddie?
Yeah, just go back to something was said earlier about why you would intervene if SVT didn't do something to town want, and it's like, that just makes my head spin because we spent, our committee spent, we had five members from various perspectives, representing different organizations, came into this, not all on the same page. We spent two meetings, whole meetings, pretty much discussing what a CR is. And what it is, the town owns the land and agrees to give up certain rights. And the holder of the CR makes sure that that decision is upheld. It's when the town gives up the rights that you, the town's protection is there, right? It's like we say, we're not gonna have this. We've decided we're not gonna have this, we want this instead, and we wanna limit the development capacity and uses on the land. That's where the town's being protected. In that document, the holder of the CR is just to ensure it's upheld. So at what point, for conservation values, passive recreation, and to allow the golf to continue? It's all in the CR. You can do this, you can't do that. It's really pretty black and white if you read the CR. All the holder does is ensure that's what's happening. They inspect it if there's, you know, stockpiling of goods where they shouldn't be, or, you know, somebody's encroached somehow. They, they work it out with whoever's encroached and come up with, you know, to fix it. It's not like, oh, we want the golf course to be able to do that, and you don't want them to do it. It's in the CR. Either they can or they can't. So this whole thing of like, the town having protection, you know, needs to protect our rights. We own the land. We get to use the land the way, right now, from town meeting vote and incorporated into the CR, it's legally defined and approved by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. There's not this, we want the golf course to do this and you don't want the golf course to do that. Either they can or they can't, and it's in the CR. There really shouldn't be a lot of this back and forth. So I don't really know what the added value of having the Conservation Commission there to protect the town's rights. The town's rights are protected in the CR document. It's very simple. It's not, and as far as protecting the conservation description, the best group to do that is SVT that numerous towns have hired them to do and have given them CRs. And I haven't found one single CR that they co-hold with the town, that the town owns the land. They do, they just did a big project out in Wayland I'm familiar with. It was like a 200 acre farm, they worked for years, they privately fundraised three and a half million dollars, and the town raised the rest. And then the property owner still owns the land and they co-hold the CR together. It was a joint project together. That's the kind of co-holding CRs, jointly working together. This is different, the town owns the land. Yes, you can have a co-holdership if it makes sense, but I haven't seen any added value to protecting the use of the land. And we all want to see the golf succeed. And SVT is actually working on another golf course, and I believe it's made of right now. So it's not like, it's not like we're gonna lose something by having the best experts around.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. We use the term the golf course. Is there a legal entity involved with the running of the golf course? Is, is it, is it a, is it a town-owned function? But I'm confused as to how.
It's a management company that will be managing the daily activities of course, the same one that it's been managing on behalf of St. Mark's for the last number of years.
Right.
They're gonna continue to manage the daily activities, the town owns it.
Yeah, so the town owns the golf course.
Yes.
So if, is it possible that the town could ever transfer ownership of the golf course to anyone else, to any other entity?
For others, but I, I don't, if, if we were to do so, that CR is in perpetuity in the state, so if someone else wants to, they get what they get, which is the golf course for passive recreation. And, you know, I'll just, one comment, Miss Gillespie may know more than town council on this, I encourage you to, you know, to speak with him and, and get his opinion. Maybe her arguments are right, that we shouldn't come to our own Conservation Commission to be part of the, one of the biggest purchases the town has ever had. Maybe he's wrong, and she could be right. You know, and we're fighting over the same thing, you know, protecting, you know, the golf course with the CR. His advice to us was, minimal additional cost in the grand scheme of things, it's clearly best to have it co-held. That was his opinion, and I followed it, so.
All right, thank you.
Final statement?
Yeah, we're wrapping up after this.
Town meetings warrant article that passed that, and I'm not sure exactly what it was in front of, a land use attorney. I don't think it was independent, but a specialist. At our meeting, this is somebody who works on these, we have town council, but who does all of the municipal meetings, right? We have a specialist in CRs and land use that the town hired. At our meeting, he indicated that it was the simpler, better way to go, to have a single holder, until he came back the next meeting and said he was not hired to give an opinion on that, and he didn't have an opinion on it. But at our one meeting, he did indicate the simplest, easy, best way to go. He's an attorney expert, and I may not be an attorney, but I had, before this even came up, I attended a workshop with, I think it was eight of the best land use attorneys from Massa Audubon, the trustees of reservations, at a land use conference, and this topic was under discussion. So I did listen and learn a lot and talked to, I've talked to a lot of lawyers about it. There's no detriment to having a single holder of this.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
He came to our meeting as well, it was my first opportunity to meet with him. His advice to us was, it can be co-held. So he didn't give an opinion one way or the other, that sole hold is the best way to go, co-hold is the best way to go. Whatever the town chooses, they can make it work, because it's not uncommon to have a co-owner.
All right. All right, thank you. We have, we have more business to attend to tonight.
Can I give back, who you put this next on your agenda?
Well, we'll, we'll discuss tonight. We have, we meet again next week. So this meeting was rescheduled from the cycle of offices. So we rescheduled that meeting tonight, so I'll next have to do my first meeting, so. Continuing on the, the feeling of the board that they're involved. Thank you.
Don't bother writing letters. Thank you, buddy. I wrote that, my friend.
Okay.